Hi, how are you?
Good.
Thanks for asking.
How are you?
I'm great. That's great. That's great. Oh my gosh. That's crazy. It was already. That's hysterical. Are you inviting me so? About if we could call three down.
This is the bar.
Oh my gosh.
I don't have a whole chair.
I'm quite familiar with this, but the other side, because Emily's very small. So we did the bone X-rays. Bone age. What is this bone age? You should call. Because for me, it's just like two days. Yeah, they should. I'm from time graduating. Yes. That's very interesting. When it's funny, it's all inverse. My situation, because my daughter is very small. And so last year, for the first time, my doctor was like, I just want to get her tested. He tested for CILAC. Tested for growth hormone. And then, is she not producing enough? She is. Um, the bone age span. She was like... So the doctor was like, it just looks like she's a late moon. She said she'll grow. It's just that she's not much later. So we go over something this year and give her a lot of like fat. We've been doing that as much as we can. Chocolate is very much the thing. White rice is like the favorite thing to eat. So anyway, so then we just want to talk.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to reconvene our open session. And I'd like to ask trustee Prendergast to report out actions taken in closed session.
Nothing to report.
All right. That was easy. And you're still on. We'll have the indication led by trustee Prendergast, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Witt.
So I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in honor of the victims of Hurricane Florence, what apparently is the wettest hurricane in history, and the victims of the shootings in California in Bakersfield and Baldwin Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
All right. So we have two requests for public comments. First up will be Ari Grayson, followed by Emily Quinlan. And Ari, if we can take the podium. Emily, get ready. All right. And I'd just ask you both if you could confine your remarks to two minutes. We would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to thank the countless individuals that have contributed to the 50 years for our wonderful college and our institution here. Saddleback has become a true treasure of our community. And it doesn't happen by accident. We have so many wonderful students and parents and professors and staff and maintenance and administrators, and of course, a board of trustees. It truly takes a village. But what I wanted to say today also is, when I seek guidance, when I seek wisdom, I frequently look to our founding fathers. And there's none that I revere more than Benjamin Franklin. And Benjamin Franklin created our first public library system. He also was a co-founder of the University of Pennsylvania. He understood that in order for our democracy to work, we had to have a well-educated population. And knowledge could not just be the purview of the economically elite, the financially fortunate among us. He knew, as I say, that everybody had to receive a quality education and that knowledge had to be distributed throughout our community. And that's what we do here as a community college. We bring knowledge and understanding to everybody. And we try to do it at a level that is affordable for everyone. So it's my great honor as a co-advisor to the Pre-Law Society to be working with the wonderful students that we have in the Pre-Law Society, the Associated Student Government, to be working with my colleague Emily Quinlan, to be bringing to us here at Saddleback, a candidate forum this Wednesday. We have some great people. We have one gentleman who is running for California Attorney General. We have two congressional candidates. And we have four individuals that are running for the California State Legislature. So with that in mind, we are so proud to be working with these great students and at this great institution, especially as we're celebrating our 50th anniversary, and to help expand the reach of our institution and to continue to make it such a treasured and valued part of our community. So hopefully, we can see everybody there on Wednesday. We'll begin at about 11:30. We'll kick off our event at about noon. It'll run to about 2 o'clock. And hopefully, this is going to be the beginning of many, many wonderful events and opportunities for everyone. So thank you.
Ari, can I ask you a quick question? So are the... I think... I'll just ask. Are the two congressional candidates who represent Saddleback College coming or just one of the candidates?
Well, we are actually on the border between the 45th and the 49th district. And we have one candidate, Katie Porter, who will be representing the 45th. And actually, we learned just the other day that Katie won't be able to attend. So she'll have a surrogate from her team there. The other candidate will be Mike Levin, who represents the 49th district. We have extended invitations to Diane Harkey, who is an alumnus of Saddleback. Unfortunately, she hasn't responded to texts or emails or phone calls. And the same with our representative here, Mimi Walters. Unfortunately, we haven't gotten any response from her. Needless to say, we're somewhat disappointed in that. We do have, for the state assembly, we have Matthew Harper, representing the 74th district. And we have his opponent, Cotty Petry Norris, who is seeking to replace him. It will be the first time the two of them are on the stage together at one time. So I wish we had more people who are currently representing us. Unfortunately, it speaks poorly to them and our current state of political affairs that people aren't willing to show up when we provide them with such a tremendous opportunity.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Ari.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Question.
You said it's going to be Wednesday at 11:30. Where on campuses is it going to be?
I'm sorry. It's at the McKinney Theater.
Oh, okay.
And it will be streamed live on YouTube. And hopefully, once the event has concluded, we will have a link to that video at the college and district website as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much for a moment of your time. My name is Emily Quinlan. I'm a business faculty member here at Saddleback College. I am also the co-faculty advisor along with Ari Grayson for the Pre-Law Society. And everything he said, I agree with and support. I would also like to add that another slate of candidates who will be present at the candidate forum on Wednesday at the McKinney Theater are three of Saddleback College's own students who are running for public office. So we are absolutely thrilled about these incredible student leaders who are going to be running for city council, two students in San Clemente, Jason... Excuse me. Jackson Hinkle and Jake Ribcik. And then another student, Mahmoud Al Farah, is running for Mission Viejo City Council. So we are absolutely thrilled to be able to have those students present and reaching out to their constituents, their very own peers and fellow students at Saddleback College. We're going to be following up with a couple of other events after the candidate forum, one of which just came to light in the last two days. And that was an event that we're going to be calling "Don't Ghost the Vote." I don't know if you're familiar with the youthful term of ghosting someone. That means if you're texting someone or communicating with them on social media and suddenly, they no longer respond to you, it's called being ghosted. So our event is going to take place on Halloween, and it's called "Don't Ghost the Vote" because we understand from the Orange County Registrar of Voters that people are disappearing on Election Day and not coming to the polls. And it is for that reason that the Orange County Registrar of Voters has agreed to set up a mobile polling voting booth on October 31st at Saddleback College from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. to allow our students to vote on our campus one week prior to the election for early voting. So we're thrilled to announce that, and we look forward to sharing more information with you about that soon. We hope we see you at the event on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we're going to go into a very short recess right now to celebrate the occasion of the 50th anniversary of Saddleback College. So I think I need a motion to go into recess.
So move.
A motion from trustee Milchuker. And, well, the electronics version tells me we have a motion from trustee Witt and a second from trustee Jay. And then we're going to recess. We're going to go outside and take a quick photo. And we'll be back in a minute or two. So let's go ahead and vote.
Where do we vote?
I saw it. Just... There it goes. The motion carries. Seven to zero. Student advisory, yes, vote to go into recess. We'll be right back. They should have invited you.
They should. They should. You're right.
They should have invited. Dennis Walsh is right. I'm surprised he didn't.
Hi, how are you? Nice to see you. How are you? You're my friend Brock.
Flatlines.
So you can flat mine?
Oh, I hope I don't.
Yeah. I know where the deep part is.
Although I fought hard, I could present it to you at the one.
Where is that thing?
Yes.
Exactly. Mask wrapped. Alcohol. It's a lab. You can fight it in there. Just break in. No. What kind of hair? That's true. People can walk around.
The first line. I got one from a recipe show. And then the other two, I...
Story is it's wack.
Because of my sister. My sister.
So you do the...
I guess I'll...
It's essentially the same one that went through that last time. Yeah. They have no achieving language. Essentially, I mean, most of the... It's not going.
That's right. Yeah.
That was actually interesting. I went to a training last week about diversity hiring. I had a class by the janitor's day change. They changed, there was their... Oh, actually, I think that hurt. She was mentioned, say, several times by the church. Sorry, like their hiring.
Our profession. You said that to the... Yeah. Several times.
Oh. And what I meant to say was, fuck the researchers there. Because it was a bunch of... And many researchers... Essentially, they're going to be... No, but I was surprised. Researchers supposedly create all these reports about, you know, hiring. There's a lot of the questions where you first look at data, you look at your disproportionate impact in terms of hiring. Where does it happen? Should you work, you apply, or do you locate to get to the first level? Because we have to go to the second level. So where does the disproportionate impact happen? And we can't do that. No, no, actually, it has to go over the charge.
I think...
I don't know if I want that. Because they charged you that.
It depends. Once you have the... I don't know. So it's... Bring it back to me.
Yes. You want to do...
It's the different... Yeah. I know. I think it's probably... Schools. Of course, it's been... It's been... Must be something...
Sort of being supposed to... There's some thing that you put in there. I wouldn't think it's... Something to charge. Still, as you said. Just... Gender.
So that makes... I think that's... It's kind of what we're trying to do. My philosophy. When I'm in Canada, it's really the best. One thing. But by time I've seen it, I've got to maybe the first... One. These things do... Can have...
Oh, and you would look at the thing in these materials and... Finally, they have this question that you can use this... Based on our population. And the census. Because that is the review that you... All the students. As different ages of the Jack, it's potentially certain trends. They're going in different directions. So you're hiring now from what your student body's going to look like in 10 years. Figuring out where the impact is, is the next... Or is it presented? Do you look like your residents are trying to look like your students? Are you trying to look like what is projected or what is now? It's actually nothing.
Yeah. So I'm only speaking from the data sense. So what's being said, you know, is there's something... I'm not sure. And that is that we've learned... From personally, from...
But that's not... No. There was actually a CESA that spoke up during my... I know what you're trying to do. But it's actually about cultural competence. It's not about... But obviously, if the impact is too disproportionate, then it's difficult to make an argument, right? So it suggests that you have a fair... Competence. Let's say that... You say that none of the African-American companies that hire is cultural competence. It's difficult to judge. But if you already found, you can say, look, we're not hiring just because. Specifically, here's our process here. I'm the first one. Our cultural competence. So she actually made that argument. So it's an interesting session.
Yeah. Business, what you don't know is the answer is in... So you're always going to say that. So I think it's impossible to do this. But I think it's... All the way to the right. Now, the chairman is... I think it's...
Not right now. That's not... I don't know. I like to... I think it's... We didn't know what to say, but...
I was like, all right. Even though I've seen...
So... Very good job. Well, that's a little bad, all the way.
I'm frustrated that we're like, who cares? You're being...
Something like that. I hope not.
All thanks. I'm trying to tell you how you're...
That was in six months.
I believe before talking.
So... You're having a fun... Well, maybe it's just a... It's a college. So...
I think that... What might you want? Say some things to what most people may have to...
You don't have to, but I have to. The thing that minimizes the impact... Or personal attacks. You want to minimize that. Also, one thing, I'm probably... So we got Terry.
Why were you...
Laying it out.
Okay, you guys got it.
I'm going to be...
I've had enough for today.
Oh, you did?
So that's what I... That's the third cake.
No, Terry.
Oh, I'm saying that's the... They've got a... Press.
Yeah. People are... Yeah. He did have a fun... Could have been...
Could have. It could have, yeah.
Relevant at this point. I just thought...
Ah.
More secondary.
Who had...
I... I never have...
Go run.
I go... I go to Zumba lot, right? I like Zumba.
I don't...
All right. Is that everybody?
Oh, okay.
What? I am going to shoot the messenger. All right. Okay. That was great. Congratulations again, Saddleback College. Awesome cake. Everyone who organized it. And if you didn't get a piece, there's plenty of cake out there. We have enough cake for all of you who are watching the board meeting tonight. Maybe not those on TV. Sorry. All right. So we're going to start with board reports. And we're going to start to my right with trustee Lang.
Thank you, President Jamal. Well, I'm going to continue the theme started by Ari and continued with our little celebration here. Although I was unable to attend the earlier lunch today honoring Saddleback's 50th year anniversary, it's indeed a great honor to acknowledge this achievement and give thanks to all those who have contributed to the success of Saddleback Community College and the numerous students who have benefited from the education that they receive from this institution. It's truly been a great team effort involving employees, past and present, who have helped create and establish and sustain the reputation of this college that this college enjoys as one of the best community colleges in this county and state. We, you know, we do periodic reports that attempt to quantify the economic benefits that the college provides to this community, and they are indeed substantial. I've been personally blessed to have been associated with this college during a significant number of these 50 years and hope that I may have contributed in some small measure to the college's many accomplishments. My sincerest wishes to the sustained achievement by Saddleback Community College during this next 50 years and beyond. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Jay.
I want to thank Julie Bandi and everyone who worked so hard on the 50th anniversary celebration. We had eight of the original faculty at the celebration. It was fun to be there and to get reacquainted with some of the people that I used to know when Bill was alive. We heard old stories. We saw neat films. And we thank President Byce for doing such a good job. So many worked so hard on this 50th anniversary. I just could never thank them enough, and it was a huge success. I just wish my husband, Bill Jay, could have been there to see it. He would have loved it. He was a trustee for 11 years and I think 28 years on the faculty. And I just wish that... He died three and a half years ago. I just wish he could have been there because it was so much fun. It was a lot of fun and games. And I played one of the games. It was trying to get the toilet paper roll into the toilet. I thought it was a cute game. I got one of the three rolls in. And then I saw the gal later. She says, you're the only one so far that's gotten one of the toilet paper rolls in the toilet. It was a lot of fun.
Yeah.
And so I just want to congratulate Jim and everybody for doing such a wonderful job. It was a great fun and a huge success. And congratulations, Saddleback College, on 50 years.
Thank you for that, trustee Jay. I'm not sure I'm glad I missed it or not, no. But it sounds like it was great. And everyone who was there, I don't want to name everyone because I don't know everyone who was involved. But I know there were a lot of people that are involved. And I know there are year-long celebrations taking place to recognize the occasion of 50th anniversary of Saddleback College. And I'm a resident at Mission Viejo, and Saddleback happens to be in Mission Viejo. What an addition to our community it has been. The impact that this college continues to have on students and families and you all, faculty, the administration, staff, every day is immense. It absolutely is immense. And you should be proud to be part of this district. And today, we celebrate in particular Saddleback College. It's a special place. And, you know, we have some challenges going forward. And we'll address them and figure it out. And we'll continue to make Saddleback College the... And many people I know that were veterans came by and really had an opportunity to help the new vets at the college and really give them an opportunity to volunteer and help them succeed in college. And many of these students do incredibly well and transfer to the top colleges all over the country. I met with Sessa Hird Johnson in the New Student Activity Center at Irvine Valley College and really saw what they did to the New Student Activity Center, which used to be the preschool at Irvine Valley College. And they really did a great job of fixing it up and making the students there feel welcome and feel at home there. I attended the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force Meeting at Orange Coast College, meets once a month at 1:00 in the afternoon, and all of the college chancellors were there, and it was very informative. And we're going to work on legislation. We had legislative updates for both state and federal. I attended the IVC Debate Showcase where the Irvine Valley College debate students, debated the students from Rwanda. They talked about... The debate was on the International Criminal Court, which was just a fascinating debate. And at the end, the Rwandan students talked about how the Rwandan genocide affected them personally, and they gave presence to the Irvine Valley College students. And I was just so impressed at how our students get such an incredible opportunities to meet with Rwandan students and debate with them, and the debate was a tie between the Rwandan team and the IVC team. And then, of course, the 50th anniversary celebration, I don't need to repeat what my fellow board members have said. It was wonderful. I want to thank Ryan Brook and Julie Brader Jenny for organizing the whole event, and it was just really incredible to see all these retired professors and administrators from Saddleback College come back and talk about what Saddleback College meant to them. They said it was like their whole lives, and they really felt so nostalgic for Saddleback College, and they really felt that they really contributed to making Saddleback College what it is today. And that is true. They did contribute to it, and it was wonderful to see them and talk to them, and I hope we have many more meetings like that. And thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, just to put what Dave Lang said, except the significant number of yours changed out to eight.
All right.
Trustee Wright.
Thank you. I've attended a few meetings since the last board report. Again, on Tuesday, September the 4th, I led the Pledge of Allegiance and attended the 10th Annual South Orange County Veterans Resource Fair. Wonderful event. Met a lot of veterans and talked to a number of them. Also, I've attended the Saddleback College Football Team. They've had four games so far. I attended two of them. On September the 1st, I attended the football game for Saddleback College versus College of the Canyon. Saddleback did not win that game. They lost 19 to 6. Then I attended another game on Saturday, September the 15th, where Saddleback College played Pasadena City College, and Saddleback College won 50 to 21. Their record now is five... Their record is 2 and 2. They've won 2 and lost 2. And Homecoming is coming up this weekend on the 29th, and it should be a good game. The other thing, I attended the 50th Anniversary Celebration Luncheon, and it was a great... A number of the eight honorees, I knew several of them, having been at the college for a little over 24 years now. And the last item I just wanted to mention very briefly is that I wanted to... for $9.9 million. This was given to Saddleback College, and it's from the National Science Foundation, and Saddleback College will be a leader in an effort to educate and train a more diverse science and engineering workforce. Chemistry Professor Jim Zoval, who I know very well, will serve as the principal investigator for this prestigious award. I think that's a wonderful, wonderful grant, and congratulations.
Thank you. Trustee Witt.
Good evening. I have spent more than three quarters of my life here at Saddleback. It's a long time, and I have to say, I'm probably happier now than the first day I came, and I still remember that first day. It was spring 1976, and I went around campus asking students why they came here because I was thinking that I might work here. And I think, not think, I know, students would say the same. Today, you saw faculty and students alike participating together, having fun, and I think that is part why we are so significant and so good, because in my classroom, they learn, but they have fun. So I hope everyone takes that with them if you're administrator or if you are staff or you're faculty. Always remember to have fun. I also want to share that I started something, and I hope all of you continue it. We have a celebration till, what, commencement, right, Jim? So we need to celebrate till commencement, and you all got T-shirts. Don't put them in the closet. Take them and take a picture of that 50 years. Make Saddleback known around the country. I went to the Pacific Crest Trail, and I got a picture of that 50 right next to that sign, and I'm proud of it. I only walked it a mile, but nobody needs to know that. At any rate, I hope more of you do that. I want to thank Julie and Ryan for doing such a job, and Jenny, it was more than I expected today. And you may have won the toilet contest. I won part of the hula hoop contest. Thank you.
I hope someone captured that on video.
They do.
All right. You finished?
That's it, yeah.
Okay, thanks. So chancellor's report.
I'd also like to congratulate Saddleback College on 50 years of service to the community. It is my honor to be able to celebrate this year with you in my first year with the district. I'd also like to bring you up to date on some changes in our office. First, I'd like to welcome Kristin Duggins as the new manager for the Office of the Chancellor and Trustee Services. Kristin, you may want to wave. Where she will assist Grace with office operations. Before joining our district, Kristin worked in the Huntington Beach Union High School District from 2007 as the executive assistant in the Office of Educational Services, which oversees the curriculum, instruction, and categorical programs, special education, student services, educational technology, and assessment and evaluation. I would also like to thank Myra Arias for substituting in the position of manager office of the chancellor while we recruited for the permanent position. Myra worked in the chancellor's office from early June to mid-September, and she has returned to her full-time, permanent position as a senior administrative assistant to the Office of Research, Planning, and Data Management. And finally, I would like to thank Amy Garcia, who has been substituting as the executive secretary in Public Information Office, as well as assisting the chancellor's office since July. Her last day in the office will be this Wednesday, and she will be leaving us to continue to pursue her baccalaureate degree in human resources at Cal State Fullerton.
Oh, and I think I skipped over the student trustee. I apologize. Student trustee Huang.
No problem. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I would also like to continue to commemorate Saddleback's 50th year. I've only been here a short year, but from being a student and a student trustee, I can see exactly why. We have one of the best transfer rates in the state. So a couple other reports. On September 5th, I attended IVC's Club Day, and it was really, really amazing. It was actually really, really big, and we had a couple new clubs this year. We had Feminist Club, a Law Society Club, and a GSA. So for me, it's really cool to see that a lot of the students are taking a political initiative, especially given, you know, the current political climate. On September 7th, I attended the ASIVC Executive Meeting, and one of the highlights was that ASIVC's executive cabinet and senate will now be getting paid, which is really, really great because knowing that and knowing how much work goes into running a student government, I'm really glad that they'll finally be getting compensated. On September 21st, I attended the Inner Club and Co-Curricular Council Leadership Summit. There were a few workshops about Title IX, and we had over 100 club officers and members participate. We also learned about a couple of the various resources that our equity program has, like Pride Scholars for LGBT students and the Promise Program for underprivileged students that helps pay their textbooks, that gives them mentors through the entire year. So it's really, really great programs. And then we also have a Veterans Center and a Veterans Program, too. Oh, and then we also have an e-fair program, too, that provides students with food insecurity, which we talked about a couple meetings ago. But every Tuesday from 5 to 6 at IVC on Tuesdays, we actually have weekly dinners. So for students that maybe have food insecurity, you can come in, no questions, just come in and eat dinner with everyone, and it's really, really nice. A couple upcoming projects also. I'm working with the student life directors, Sessa and as well as Saddleback, to hold monthly forums on each of the campuses so I can directly talk to the students and get to know them a little more about things that concern them. So for example, IVC, I had their Green Team, that's just another club that started this recent year, and their whole thing is about recycling, and they came up to me and they were wondering, oh, like, how exactly can we get involved? And I know at our very last meeting, we had kind of... There was a whole, like, we had a whole overhaul of green initiatives. Like, I know that we were doing, like, just the water bottle things. I know we did that recently, too. So that was really cool. So I'll be holding monthly forums from now on to talk directly to the students. And I was also talking to trustee Melchiker about how ASG of IVC is starting to... Or we're getting in the works of starting a branch or a club for the American Association of University Women that I know a couple... I'm pretty sure all the other female trustees are a part of as well. And in talking to trustee Melchiker, she was saying that usually members have to pay a due, but because IVC and Saddleback are part of this organization, students that want to join, young females that want to be empowered, they don't have to pay the membership dues so they can just, you know, join and join this really great organization. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a request from trustee Witt to augment her report.
I still had 29 seconds. I just wanted to mention something. I went into the library today, and I saw something... Wow. And that was, it's not a vending machine, but it's like a vending machine. You don't have to put any money into it, and it's for our homeless students or our students who are in need. But if you're hungry, you go and you open up the door and you pick something out to eat. And apparently, in the Student Health Center, Dean Jeanne Caldwell has made a contract... Has signed a contract with Starbucks, and they will supply this vending machine. And there was a line of students just opening up, taking a salad or taking, I thought it was potato salad, but whatever it was, you don't pay for anything. And I just wanted you to know, I'm sure that we are the first college anywhere who has done something like this. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for that update. Okay, moving on to college presidents' reports.
All right. Thank you, President Jamal. Thank you. I would like to join in the congratulations for the 50th for Saddleback College and to thank my colleague, President Weiss, for inviting me to that luncheon with the eight or so original faculty members today. The stories that I heard were absolutely amazing, ranging from rattlesnakes to raccoons to frogs. Trying to think what else, but you could imagine... The pardon? Oh, the Road Runner. Imagine the, sort of, the adventure it was to be part of that original faculty here at this institution. So again, congratulations and thank you, Jim, for the invite. Enjoyed it very much.
All right. Saddleback College.
And I'd like to thank President Rockmore and IVC for a very special and wonderful surprise with the resolution that they gave us, which will be on the wall in my office. So thank you very much. And I'd like to thank my staff. They did all the work. Julie and Ryan led the effort, but there were a lot of people involved, and it was a marvelous day, and it took everyone pitching in and making a contribution. And that's the kind of folks that work here, teach here, and that's why it's a great institution. I'd also note that our next, I think it's the next 50th celebration, will actually be at Homecoming at halftime. And so if you have an opportunity to get to the game this weekend, the 29th, that would be great. I think you'll enjoy that. So we're going to look for every opportunity to celebrate this year, and as I think President Jamal mentioned, we're carrying it all the way to commencement. So... And with that, I think I'll just close and let the day speak for itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And the Homecoming is going to be at Mission Viejo High School, correct?
Correct.
And starting at around 5:00 PM?
6:00. 6 o'clock.
6:00 PM?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
And hopefully we'll have another victory.
I've been going to a few of the games myself. They're getting better.
They're at Riverside. I'm going to be attending with my grandson and a bunch of his 20-year-old buddies, and I'm going to be in Saddleback garb, so...
I would hope so.
So I hope we're on a winning streak. Got a lot of...
Duh!
And I'm going when I get there because my old friends at Riverside may be hunting me down.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna watch over you that night. All right. Okay, moving on. ASG, I guess we're missing IVC.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There we go. Okay. I'd also like to commend Saddleback on the 50th anniversary. I'm excited to be a part of and representing such a formative and groundbreaking district as this. And we also, ASG of IVC is excited with the success of their Laser Week event, which was held from August 15 to the 17th, which allowed our new student leaders to apply their skills they learned in training and actually put them into practice. They led tours for incoming students around campus. They also worked shifts, serving as ushers for morning and evening sessions. And our public relations committee also made two videos highlighting and showcasing the event. All in all, it helped the student leaders really understand their role, what it means to be a student leader and representative, and how to work between faculty. And preparations for the upcoming year, we're excited to announce that we have completed our hiring process for new commissioners, senators, and executives. So now we have a full slate of officers for the year. Currently, we are looking through our bylaws and compiling responsibilities for commissioners and directors to know exactly what their job responsibilities are. And we are also finalizing office work hours, committee meeting times, and selections for campus committee representatives. And we also now are doing leadership development meetings every first Friday of the month where we allow our whole student life and equity team to come together and discuss everything they've been working on throughout the month. And this really helps create a more cohesive, I think, in general, student life program. And we also hosted our Club Day. I4C hosted this on September 5th. This really just showed and highlighted all the clubs we have on campus and allowed a lot of the new incoming students to really be exposed to what we have to offer on IVC campus. And we also, as trustee Huang mentioned, had the I4C Club Summit, which allowed club advisors and representatives to come through the New Student Activity Center, which I'm glad trustee Melchiker was able to come and see. And we were able to talk to them as well and just for them to get an idea of I4C and the relationship between the clubs and the representatives. And I'm also working with Nancy Montgomery, the Assistant Dean of Health and Wellness. We are looking forward to next year in May, having a mental health, a full-time mental health provider on campus. I'm also hoping to host a mental health awareness event where we have various booths showcasing various mental health resource centers, hopefully for students to find some critical outlets for them. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, I don't think we have any board requests for reports, so we're going to move on to our discussion item, which is the Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Student Success Scoreboard. Scorecard. Sorry. Maybe it is a scoreboard a little bit.
Thank you for having us.
Good evening. Um, thank you for having us. I'm Denise Enziang, um, the District Director of Research Planning up at our district offices. And I'm joined tonight with um Dr. Loris Fagioli, who's the Director of Research and Planning and Accreditation at Irvine Valley, and Dr. Jennifer Klein, who's our Director of Research and Planning and Accreditation at Saddleback. We're going to be presenting um the Student Success Scorecard, uh, as we have done for many years now. Um, and we're gonna actually give you some um additional highlights on some upcoming metrics that we're, we're also looking um into. So you know, um, this started with our accountability legislation, AB seventeen fourteen seventeen back in two thousand and four. And we're going to highlight six areas of our, our scorecard. Completion, um, completion of thirty units, degrees, transfers, certificates. Um, we're going to look into basic skills, completion of English and math, um, level, transfer level completion. And we're also going to um talk about the metrics around CTE completion and skills builders. But before we get into the actual scorecard metrics, um, we wanted to just highlight a few upcoming um metrics that are the talk of, of the state. Um, if you have seen Chancellor Burke's opening session, um, you know of the Vision for Success um from our systems office. And why it's um pertinent to our discussion tonight is many of these um goals are also related to metrics that we have been following. But we're going to be looking at it in different ways in the Vision for Success. So we wanted to highlight that um three of the goals are related to our scorecard metrics. Um, two that are in completion with the increase um of annual student completions and associate's degrees, credentials, certificates. Um, with, they're looking at a twenty percent increase over the next five years. Um, so that's one of the goals in the um Vision for Success. An additional goal is um increasing by thirty-five percent the number of community college students who are transferring annually to the UC or the CSU. And what's different um in these metrics is these are volumes. And as you, as you remember, um, in our scorecard metrics, there are cohorts. So um those cohorts we follow over six years. Um, so when you look at the scorecard metrics, those are cohorts that started six years ago. Um, so a different way that we're cutting metrics going forward. And lastly, the one that we're going to mention tonight is um increase in the percentage of CTE students um who be, who are reported um that they're employed in their field of study. So if you remember, over the years, um, we've been trying to find better metrics around career technical education. Um, and so this is another way of looking again um at these students to try to see if they are getting employment. So that's the Vision for Success. The other metric that we're keeping our eye on and actually very interested in because it's part of our Funding Formula change. It's the Student-Centered Funding Formula. Um, you know that it has always been on FTS, our apportionment reporting. Um, but they have added two more parts, an equity uh piece and a success piece. So we're looking into these areas. Um, and they've changed the formula a great deal. So we're doing more analysis on how students are being counted in this formula. In success and relevant to our scorecard is they're going to be looking at completion again with degrees, certificates, um, and transfer in addition to CTE units and completion and transfer level math and English with a focus on first-time students. So again, um, you know, we've been doing a lot of accountability reporting for the last over ten years. And I think some of the things that we've heard is that, you know, the cohorts are a little harder to understand because it's a rate and it's, it's over six years. So in, in the near future, we're going to be doing more um analysis and, and presentations on, on these metrics. So I'll return back to the normal scheduled presentation, which is the metrics in the scorecard, which we're required to present tonight. Um, in this metric, I'll just orient you to the graph as we have done in the past years. It's a five-year trend where we look across five years to see how we're doing every year. Um, and if you remember, the years indicate the year the cohort started. So our last cohort that we have data a six, a complete six-year picture on is two thousand and eleven, twelve. They've just finished watching them in the last year in six, uh seventeen, eighteen. So if you look at our completion rate, this includes all of those pieces, um, degrees, certificate, transfers. The legends here, our IBC is blue, Saddleback is kind of that reddish-orange. Um, Orange County is the green line and the brown line is statewide. So as we have in the past, we're per- we're performing really well. Um, above our Orange County colleges, our counterparts in Orange County, as well as above our statewide average. So we've been consistently performing really well. And we wanted to throw in a little piece um after this because if you um heard in the news, and I think Chancellor Burke uh is familiar in this area, Moore Park had announced that in one of our updates um that they had the highest completion rate in the state. So you know, who doesn't go look and see what are, what are our rates? So we looked and um their rate was sixty-four percent. IBC is sixty-two point eight, and I think they're right below Moore Park and Saddleback is fifty-eight point two. So you know, they're very close to, to Moore Park. Um, so we dove, we dove into this a little further and we wanted to show you just one of the things about looking at the, the data and the information, it's all about the context. And so again, as we were mentioning that these are cohorts of students, we also were um interested in the prepared and the unprepared within the cohort. So it's a lot of numbers up here, um, but you know the cohort size are different depending on who qualifies to get into the cohort. So Moore Park had two thousand five hundred fifty-eight students in this cohort that got the sixty-four percent completion rate. IBC had eighteen hundred and Saddleback had about twenty-nine hundred. So you see there's differences in the size of the cohort. Then you cut the cohort by prepared and unprepared. Prepared means that these students are pretty much at transfer level. So it's an, a little easier step into degrees, certificates, and transfers. Unprepared are students who are starting in a remedial math or English, and it's going to take them a little bit more to get to this completion. But what we, what we looked at was really, if you look at Irvine Valley and Saddleback, there's a larger number of unprepared students in our cohorts. And even though we're right next to Moore Park and, and very close in rate, if you look at our unprepared cohorts, that's a larger percentage. And we feel that we're doing even better because we're helping them get to completion when they're starting out at a, at a kind of at a harder point in getting to, to their goal. So with that, I'm going to uh turn over my part to Jennifer and Loris, and they will be walking you through the rest of the, the metrics in the scorecard.
Uh, the next two slides um deviate a little bit from the six-year cohorts that you've seen. Uh, if you look at the very bottom, you see the most recent data we have for uh the next two slices, two thousand fifteen, sixteen. This is a midpoint that we look at. So this is the English transfer level achievement rate. And because we're only looking at a one-year timeframe, we can go a little bit further and don't have to go back all the way six years. So these are students who started uh in, for instance, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and how many completed a transfer level English course. And as you see, some of these graphs are actually upward trending compared to other graphs that are more flat. And uh obviously, we predict these uh to go even further up over the next few years with the passing of Assembly Bill seven oh five. Uh, so they will have dramatic impact. But even here, you see uh that many colleges have already done a lot of work in the prior years with acceleration and multiple measures that uh have been implemented at both colleges. Uh, the similar graph for math, um, as you see, uh, these are also upward trending. Uh, math has also uh done quite a few redesigns of um their basic skills sequences. And with uh AB seven oh five, these will also continue to uh trend upwardly, upward quite dramatically. The last slide I will present is another midpoint. Uh, we are back to the six-year cohorts now, so the most recent that we have is two thousand and eleven, twelve. And this is the thirty-unit achievement rate, which is kind of the midpoint to a degree. As you see, uh, Saddleback and IBC were also above uh the statewide level and um sometimes also above uh the Orange County Community Colleges and that are in our area.
Good evening. The next rate that we track is the CTE overall completion rate. Um, we define the cohorts here, uh, due to the fact that it's difficult often to figure out who is actually a CTE student. Um, so the, the definition of the cohort is the student has taken at least eight units in the CTE program, therefore being a program concentrator. This is the percentage of those program concentrators that finished eight units in a CTE program who finished their program in a six-year window. Um, as you can see, um, IBC is above the state and um Saddleback is a little bit below. Uh, and both colleges are looking at other rates in addition to the um CTE completion rate. Um, I'm actually going to get into that right now. Uh, so there's been a really big shift in the state in terms of how we look at CTE students. A lot of our CTE students are really looking to gain a competency in college by just taking a course. So the um statewide, they, a bunch of people came together um and basically said, we want to look at students who take maybe half a unit and then don't come back to college ever again because they're in the workforce. And so they call this a skills builder. And so now we're just starting to track these skills builders and look at the median uh percent wage gain for students who um have then gone to the field and gotten a, um, into their careers. So the median wage gain uh for uh IBC is uh twenty-three percent. For Saddleback, it's thirty-nine percent, and statewide, it's twenty-eight percent. So this is really good. Um, we're trending up here and uh we continue to um look at this and want to do more. Um, there are some caveats here. If people are not tracked in some of the statewide employment databases, they are not counted. So people off the books doing different types of um jobs that are maybe nor- more non-traditional aren't counted. But these conversations are continuing across the state, and so um we expect this to change as well. So then, um, this is also new, is looking at the top ten skills builder disciplines. So here, we're looking at volume. So of the pro- our CTE programs in both colleges, which programs have the most highest volume of skills builder students? Um, and so then they look at the top ten. Uh, I can tell you from just looking at these lists here and looking at a lot of our CTE programs and doing accountability reporting, there are some themes here in terms of skills builder. So kit, people who are coming here for competencies. The themes are child development, real estate, IT, and healthcare, business, real estate. These keep coming up as being popular skills builder areas. And so um, I think it's good for us to notice that there are synergies across the colleges in terms of uh which programs are attracting these skills builders.
Can I just say, I'm sorry, just can you go back? Because I don't, I don't, um, so this is, this slide is based on student, students who are enrolled in these classes, not based on labor market data?
This is um the, right, this is the volume of students who take just like a, a half a unit and then leave and they never come back for a year. And so this is the, the by program, which programs attract the largest volume of these types of students. Um, this is actually not tracking for wage gain. That's the slide prior. Um, but it's all the same denominator essentially. Um, so it's good to look at the, these kinds of things so we can see what areas of um our programs attract the students that just want a quick, you know, I want to learn something really quick and then go back out into the field. And um, you know, it's not on purpose, but it's very interesting to see that there is a lot of um subject matter synergy across the colleges when you look at these two lists. So overall, um, Irvine Valley College outperformed statewide average on four out of six measures that we've covered here, including the um completion rate. And Saddleback College outperforms the statewide average on four out of six measures as well. Um, now let's be totally candid here. Many metrics are flat. Okay, but they're also lagging indicators. And so we um we will be looking at more recent data. Uh, the State Chancellor's Office is going to give us more fresh, up-to-date uh one-year and shorter cohorts to look at. Uh, we also think that there's going to be a dramatic increase, um, as Loris was indicating, in our um transfer math and English uh transfer level course completion rates with the passing of AB seven oh five. Um, and we're really excited to uh trek along on these new initiatives, including um, a lot of the work that we're doing with Triple SP and Guided Pathways. So we hope that this will move those lines from being flat to moving on up.
So that's our presentation. Um, if you have any questions, we're here to answer.
I'm sure we do.
If we can.
And to lead us off, will be trustee Prendergast. Thank you for your presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I just kind of want to piggyback on what I think trustee Jamal was kind of looking for, and I, I agree with him on this is these are class, courses that we offer that people are taking, and then you're tracking the skills builder. But do we have any way of knowing whether we're offering the right classes? That, that maybe there's something else, somebody's looking to get a skill builder, and that we don't offer, but could or should? And I, I, am I guessing that correctly? I think, I think that's what we're on the track on.
So um, uh, to be candid, we don't do a lot of competitive analysis in our offices here in research, but that doesn't mean we can't. We have the tools. Um, there is a software package called um EMSI that we all subscribe to, and that will show us um what other colleges in the area are offering alongside that. Um, it goes all the way down to the zip code. Um, alongside that, what are the um economic patterns in the area so we can see where the job growth opportunities are? So sort of like an overlay of what do we offer, what does our competition offer, and what is the labor market doing? And that kind of suite of information can identify gaps in coursework and programming. Um, but we have, we have, we are not currently doing that.
Because I think that ties in well with the workforce development monies that the cohorts through Orange County is that am I accurate on that, that we're working with other colleges throughout Orange County because we've got the money to do that? And we could kind of pair these two together. To me, it seems like a, a, an, a perfect match.
Tony's nodding his head. And I, and I also will add one more thing. Um, you will also hear this semester that we're um going into our educational master planning and strategic planning, and that's a big endeavor for the campuses. And a big part of that is our community analysis, um, the need analysis, the assessment uh against our programs. So we're really looking forward to, to that piece, um, which will, we're hoping to kick off at the end of this year, going into two thousand and nineteen.
We're looking forward to it as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, trustee Milchiker.
Okay, yeah, excellent presentation. Um, I've got three questions and I'll ask them all, and then you could answer all three of them. Will we be contin- I know this was uh due to a bill that we're required to do a student success scorecard, and you're required to present it to the board every year. Um, how are, how we're doing in, in, in the student success. So will we be continued to require to compile a student's success scorecard and have you present it to the board every month? That's one. Um, and then the second one is just a simple question. In, in your uh, in, in some of the C E, CTE courses under Saddleback College, you, you have one course called So- Child Development and Early Child Care Education, and the other one's called Infants and Toddlers, and I wonder what the difference between those two courses are? And then the third is the really important question. Um, as a board, what can we do to ensure our colleges keep um improving and offering the proper CTE courses? I know we're going into our um master educational plan, the master facilities plan. So as a board, what could we do to make sure our, our, our two colleges keep improving in every metric that we, that we are talking about? Thank you.
Oh, uh, so to your first question, we haven't heard that we're, we, we will, we won't be presenting the scorecard um to date. So we'll be continuing to follow that metric. Um, we anticipate with some of these changes, uh, there is simplified metrics, which was supposed to address a different type of um goal-setting and metrics. But we're still waiting to hear if that's going to change any of, of this current reporting. Um, to the CTE child development, do you?
The difference is one is more for an administrator and um the other is more for a childcare worker. And so, um, but I can, I can email that information to Dr. Weiss, and then he can forward it on to you. Okay.
The last question, as a board, um, what can we keep doing? I, uh, a- as a researcher, I would say keep looking at the data and ask as many questions. Um, but I would, I would turn it over also to the chancellor and the president.
I think this is one of the things we'll start looking at at the board retreat. Um, are there policies that the board has, and I don't know yet because I haven't looked at all of them, that are bear- that create barriers for our students succeeding? And then we would bring forward some recommendations. And then, we would bring forward some recommendations to you if we found that to be the case because that's one of your key areas, is to ensure that your policies don't create barriers that you're unaware of.
Okay. Thank you for that. Trustee Lang.
Yeah, so, my question's maybe just slightly different, and that is, how we're collecting all this good data, and appreciate the job that you all are doing in that area. But I'm just wondering, how are the colleges using this information to inform the courses that they're offering, the way they're going about offering those courses, deciding on new courses, et cetera, et cetera? Because I really haven't heard, I've heard from you folks, but I haven't heard from these folks about that. And I'll go ahead and ask the second question, and that is, so, the State Chancellor's Office has established their goals, and I guess my question is, is how does that then trickle down to each of the community colleges? And are our goals by, I guess by operation, the same as those of the state? Don't know how they necessarily can be because each of the community colleges are really starting in a different place. Some may be doing a great job of their students transferring to the universities and state colleges. Others maybe, you know, have a much farther way to go in order to achieve those kinds of goals. So, I'm just wondering, how does the state goal setting impact us?
Do you want them to take the first question first?
However, they want to.
Okay.
Handle it.
Because there were two, right?
Yes.
Oh, to the college presidents.
Okay, well, I think there really are two parts to this. One is the, sort of the transfer curriculum. You know, that is very closely monitored by our vice president for instruction. And so, you get to that data by fill rates, you know, and demand on courses and things like that. We do try to focus on, you know, getting the math and the English, a number of the key courses to the students so that they can progress through their transfer hopes there. Through CTE, it's a little bit more career of technical education, and it tends to be a little bit more complicated. So, we do have a number of different mechanisms. We have the Los Angeles, Orange County Regional Consortium, and this is an organization that collects the information that we're talking about, divides the information into sectors. So, you have like a biomedical sector, engineering, you know, there's different areas. And so, that information is given back to the districts. But in the consortia, the courses are divided out among different community colleges. Some may be doing capstone, others may be doing sort of entry-level courses in that area. Other places where we get information is, say, through the Orange County Business Council, in the case of Irvine Valley College, through the Greater Irvine Chamber, where they do this kind of labor market analysis and creating these job area clusters. So, we are informed by those, and I think we're pretty effective to respond to them. I think that the one that was brought up here, though, is a skills builder. I may be speaking, you know, out of school here, but I'm not sure we are as responsive to those sort of upskill courses that, you know, people that are employed that are looking to move up, get a new skill, that we're really good at offering that. So, if I'm incorrect on that, I apologize, but I think that's the case.
I would add, that's information that goes into program review, and then that's, you know, a very important place for that to be. Also, in the CTE area, you've got advisory committees to help make sure that your programs are remaining current with what the industry needs. And that's, to me, a really vital place. I've seen other institutions where advisory committees were just kind of there, and the programs languished. So, you've got to continue to work on keeping those vibrant.
What I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm paraphrasing this incorrectly, that the data that's being gathered here is interesting, but it's only one piece, maybe a small piece of the puzzle, in terms of really influencing how curriculum is developed. Okay. Thank you.
Did you have another question, I thought?
Yes.
And that one's going to come to me. So, there are six goals in the Vision for Success. You're about five days ahead of me. We're going to talk about the Vision for Success at the board retreat, and I am probably going to ask you to establish some board goals that directly relate to them. Traditionally, in the past, the statewide chancellor's office, the statewide goals, we relate to them as we create our strategic plans and our educational master plans. Now, we have an incentive because the student-centered funding formula actually requires a direct link. So, that's part of the reason why we're going to be doing this, updating the strategic plan and the educational master plan. And I'm hoping that the board will develop its goals based on that so that it informs the district and the colleges as a whole what your goals are as they relate to those statewide goals, so that when we're doing our educational and strategic master plan, we can incorporate all of that together.
Okay. But the point is, our goals would be different from whatever goals that the state has mandated.
I think there'll be a flavor, I guess, how do we get to that goal? So, what's the board's goal to help achieve that? Because we're part of, we're a piece of those overall goals. Because if the state is looking to increase completion by 20 percent, what's our portion of that? Because they can't do it without us.
Thank you. I just had two comments. One, just to tell Trustee Langs, and you brought it up, Dr. Byss. We talked about program review at the last meeting. Came up, I think, with June and the Academic Senate, that discussion towards the end about program review, because I think it came up also in the accreditation reports. So, that, my understanding is that it's a statutory requirement for programs to demonstrate labor market data to support them. Isn't that correct? I see some nods over there. Right. So, it's not a choice. I mean, we have to do it. So, if we're approving programs that don't have the support of the labor market data, then they need to be reviewed, and the decision needs to be made, is it by the Academic Senate? Do you want to say something?
Yes, it is. We want the program to make sure that they're meeting the needs of the community and our students, that they go out and find meaningful jobs that pay, you know, sustainable wages. Like, our students may be sustainable. So, definitely, all of that comes together.
Great. Thank you. And then, my next question was, you mentioned, I appreciate your candor in saying the metrics were flat in some areas, and thank you for that, your honesty on that. How does ATEP fit into this? Especially the goal that by, increased by 20 percent, students to get in-demand jobs. I mean, clearly, that was the foundation, one foundational tenet of the ATEP is to provide a vehicle so that our students can get in-demand jobs. So, how does ATEP fit into this?
From the data perspective, the programs and courses are at the colleges. So, when we would do any analysis, it would be against the programs at the colleges. So, as far as itself, I'm not sure, I don't, can you guys speak to that? Yeah, I would defer to the presidents. We haven't cut anything in the data on ATEP.
Well, the new building at ATEP is under the auspices, is an IVC building.
Right.
That would fit under the IVC metric, that particular building and those programs in. Those programs in, what I said, I guess my mic wasn't on. The new building, the IDA building, the newest building at IVC, is on the ATEP campus. So, that would be under the auspices of Irvine Valley College. So, their students, those CTE students that are going into robotics or 3D printing, or those classes that are targeted, the IDA building would fit under the Irvine Valley College CTE metrics, I think. At least that building.
Yes, that's correct.
So, Marcia's answer is the answer?
I think so.
I'm always right.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Milchick.
Thank you, thank you. Anytime.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And we'll see you again soon.
Thank you.
Okay. So, let's move on to the consent calendar. And please, trustees, let me know if you have any polls. I don't.
I do, I do.
Is that Trustee Witt?
Yes.
Okay. Can you turn your mic?
I have a poll for 5.5 and 5.6.
Okay. Any other polls? I don't see any. So, do we have a motion to remove the balance of the items? We have a motion from Trustee Wright, and a second from Trustee Jay. Any discussion? Five. I think we should. Yeah, he's right. So, we're going to pull 5.17 as well.
Okay.
All right. So, is that okay with the mover and the seconder?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Let's go to 5.5, Trustee Witt.
I wanted to ask, do certain companies expect a 1 percent increase at the very end? I don't mean to be naive, I don't handle that kind of money, but I noticed that this company did it twice in 5.5 and 5.6. And is that expected to get an increase at the end of 1 percent of the original bid? Because the final amount was $38,618 more in one and $39,978 in the other. I understand it's just, not just, it's 1 percent. This is, you know, a boatload of money. And I'm trying to save whenever I can with Cox or with Water Company, whatever, and they say, "Well, it's just 1 percent." Well, this is hitting all of our pocketbooks. So, am I looking at it wrong? 5.5 and 5.6? It's the same company.
Our people that could answer that aren't here. I'll get an answer for you, but that would not be an expectation at the end.
Yeah, okay. Because I noticed, if you look at 5.8 that we just passed and 5.9, both of those companies gave us a $14,000 and $7,000 decrease in what the original contract was. Now, I like them. It's a great sale.
What's the reason for the change order? Is that the 1 percent that you're talking about? So, what's the justification for the change?
Well, it's not in here.
So, the change order for 5.5 is actually in item 5.14. And it was to install new power data and sand at the electrical trenches. So, I think there was more work that was required to be done on the electrical trenches once they got into trying to connect the marquees where they needed to be connected. So, they had to lengthen the lines that they were doing. So, that's what that change order is from. It is not expected that it's always a 1 percent. We do closely monitor any change orders that come through and negotiate them and try not to have them if we can.
So, that was unforeseen. I appreciate that. I just wanted to know.
Unforeseen condition.
Correct. Like the Tustin water pipe and all that.
Correct. So, that was the reason for 5.5. For 5.6, again, that item is in Agenda Item 5.14 to be approved, and that was new electric equipment and flooring that was requested as the contract was underway.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So, we're going to, do you want to, do we have to move them separately? Can we move them? I think we can move them together. Yeah, we can move them together. So, Trustee Witt, is that your motion? Move the balance because it just says.
That's fine. 5.5 and 5.6 together.
Right. Okay. So, a motion and a second from, motion, Trustee Witt, second from Trustee Lang. No further questions. Let's vote. And the motion carries by seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 5.17, the resolution on undocumented students during Undocumented Student Action Week. Yes. Well, that's why I asked. I only saw 5.5 on the screen. That's what, yeah. Okay. All right. So, we had, we have a motion on 5.6 from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Jay. Let's go ahead and vote. All right. Motion carries by seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Okay, 5.17, we have pulled, I don't know, Trustee Prendergast, you want to introduce it, or the chancellor? Did you want to say something about it?
I'll refer to the chancellor. I mean, I just thought it would, it deserved to be highlighted that we're supporting this.
So, this board took a stand last year on supporting undocumented students. There is an Undocumented Student Action Week that will be coming up in October, from the 15th to the 19th, and the board wanted to recognize that and support the celebration and the activities for Undocumented Student Action Week in October.
Okay. Thank you for that. And we have a motion from Trustee Witt and a second from Trustee Prendergast to approve the resolution supportive on undocumented student action week.
No.
No? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. So, the resolution is approved by a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Okay. All right. Sorry about that. Okay. All righty. We're moving on now to general action items. We're at 6.1, Biennial Ethics Training and Trustee Travel and Compensation. We have a motion from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Jay. Any questions? Okay, let's vote. Motion carries by seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.2, Saddleback College Stadium and Site Improvement Project. It is a change order, PCL Construction Services. We have a motion from Trustee Jay and a second from Trustee Wright, and a question from Trustee Lang.
Yes, the only reason that I had pulled this, and fortunately, I was provided with some separate information, but I don't know if everybody received that. The biggest part of the change order had to do with, I guess, soils engineering issues that have been raised by the geotechnical engineers. In fact, I think we got rid of the first geotechnical engineer and hired somebody else, and I was just kind of interested in finding out the, getting some background information about that. So, I would appreciate maybe sharing it with the entire board.
Certainly. So, yes, Trustee Lang, you're correct. We did have an original geotechnical consultant that we then replaced, and the second geotechnical consultant noticed that we needed to do much more support of a retaining wall and just kind of so much dirt being moved around at the stadium that we needed to add some additional dirt. So, we didn't have enough dirt. We added some additional dirt. As well as with the movement, you know, it was requiring some street sweeping and a flag person for soil import. We needed to add some drains to it. And then, also, we reinforced the site concrete to a much better density. And then also, we reinforced the site concrete to a much better density for the concrete so it'll last a little bit longer. That was one of the biggest things. So it was really the retaining wall and the increase in the concrete were the two major changes, as well as the redesign due to both of those, that we had to pay for the civil architectural instructional engineers to look at that.
So are we anticipating any overall delay in the project as a result of all of this? Or we still on track for fall of next year?
Right now, we're still on track, but we're still not out of DSA for the building aspect of this project. So we're hoping to come out relatively shortly. So we're crossing our fingers.
What's the likelihood of speeding up DSA?
Zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
I just want to say that I think I speak for most of the board that we're glad that we're taking care of geotechnical issues and that we don't have shifting soil issues anymore that we've had in previous buildings. So I'm all for it.
So just to dovetail the trustee Lang again, when we say 2019, does that mean, I don't know if anyone here is from athletics, does that mean in the fall of 2019 that the stadium we opened and ready for, for example, the opening day for the football team?
That's the hope, but the longer that we're delayed in DSA, that's slipping away.
At what point do you think that it has, it would have slipped away when we, what are we looking at in terms of dates? Because we have other plans, I know, for the stadium, high school teams.
Right. So we've already asked the division to start looking at Plan Bs, just in case. You know, we are probably a month away from missing that deadline. I'm going to look back to Brandy and see if she has a different date. But I think if we don't have DSA approval in the next month, then we're going to miss our opening deadline and we'll be delayed.
Yeah. That's too bad.
Yeah. We're close, you know, we're doing everything that we can to try to move the project. So, you know, for instance, we're pulling out a lot of the utilities that were in the original DSA Phase Two, and we're trying to do that as an addendum to the soils of what we're doing. So we're trying to move the schedule as much as we can so that we don't lose the time, but we're buttoned up right against it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Let's go ahead. I don't think any, I don't think we have any other questions. Let's go ahead and vote. 6.2 carries from, by a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.3 is the grant award that was mentioned, I think, in one of the opening remarks by the trustees, the NSF grant to Saddleback College and a collaboration of colleges and universities. We have a motion from trustee Wright, second from trustee Jay. Congratulations to the Saddleback team. I understand a lot of the money's going to be parsed out, so it'd be nice to know at some point how much we're going to get to retain here for Saddleback College. Or do you know that answer?
I don't have that answer right now, but we will keep you posted on how this progresses because it's a big deal.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. So this is actually, for those who may not know, we're accepting money coming into us. It's not an expenditure. All right. 6.4, another grant award, Saddleback College Veterans Resource Center Program for $200,000. Motion from trustee Jay, a second from trustee Lang. Any questions? Nope. Let's go ahead and vote. Oh, hold on. Trustee Wright.
Where are they going to locate that veterans center on campus? Are they, do they have any plans?
Plans are still being worked on, but as I understand it, because this preceded me, that the veterans center would be in the Student Services Center.
Okay.
Yeah, I talked to Terrence Nelson today, and he's really, really excited about this grant and that they'll be moving, moving around in the second floor of the Student Services Center. He was very excited.
I saw him too, he was.
Let's continue voting. Some of us have voted. Who has not, please vote on 6.4. Trustee Jay, can you cast your vote? We have a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.5, Service Desk Hardware Software Inventory Management, Patch Management System, Ivanti Inc. Approved this contract with Ivanti. Is there a motion? There is, from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Prendergast. Any questions? Nope. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.6 is the Microsoft Campus Licenses Agreement, district-wide agreement with, to use Microsoft software. A motion from trustee Lang, cellphone going off, and trustee Prendergast is second. And we have a question from trustee Prendergast.
Just curious if we know, having gone through this personally with a couple of daughters, when you purchase Microsoft software, there's a pretty heavy proprietary restriction on having access to the Pro Tools and primarily having access to Google Chrome and Google Docs and Google Drive. Is this something that we're using for staff, students, combination? And if so, do we have any say on not having those proprietary restrictions?
If, the question is whether to choose the free suite of tools from Microsoft or Google. When we chose that some time ago, it was frankly a technical limitation. Microsoft at the time could offer the college's unique branding and Google could not at that time. In the, one of my technology committees, there is an ongoing discussion about the development of Google tools, and some feel that it is more mature and should be offered. So that discussion is going on and it's being evaluated.
Okay.
Thank you.
But you can still use Google Drive.
It's just, there's some workarounds, but not every student knows how to do it. That's my only concern.
Yeah, well, Microsoft and Google don't like each other very much.
I understand that.
They don't make it easy to.
But we like to make it easier for our students and staff.
I hear you. All right. So let's complete the voting on the Microsoft License Agreement. Who needs to vote? All right. Motion carries by a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.7, number of board policy revisions for review and study. We have a motion from trustee Wright, a second from trustee Jay, and the first question from trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, because we had a question on this earlier that was answered, and I want to make sure everyone's aware. So the board policy on the elections and how we set the time period in which someone takes office is a reflection of state law that we're changing the policy to comply with and that it will have an effect on our organizational meeting. My understanding is in 2019. It would have to be the Monday after the second Friday. So just, we're aware of it and we're complying. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Thank you for that. Trustee Lang.
Yes. My comment had to do with Board Policy 130 and, which is, I think, the first, no, it's not. It's Exhibit E on page one of two. At the end of one, I had a little problem with the last sentence, assuming concurrence by public speakers, the board president has the prerogative. And I think that it would be better to just say, assuming no objections by public speakers, or even just eliminating that sentence, because obviously it is a, our meeting, member, you know, of the board, and it seems to me that the president ought to have the.
Where are you? I'm on E.
Okay. E1.
E1.
Yep. One of two. Number one.
Yep.
Last paragraph, last sentence. Where it says, assuming concurrence by public speakers. And I would just either eliminate that sentence or just say, assuming no objections by public speakers, the board president has the prerogative to reorder public comments, which is, I think, from a practical standpoint, the way we handle the matter now.
Do, yeah, I mean, do we need to, can we, can't we just say the board president has the prerogative to reorder public comments?
Okay. You can.
I think that would better conform to the way we're actually operating.
Right?
Yeah, so we can.
Good catch.
We can remove that assuming concurrence, and it'll just be the sentence, the board president has the prerogative. We'll make that change before we bring it back next month.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right. Any other questions? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote. Oh, we have the motion and second, trustee Wright, a second trustee Jay. And let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. All right. We get back to the agenda. 6.8, academic employee and classified administrator and personnel actions. Any changes?
No changes.
No changes to the item. We have a motion from trustee Wright and a second from trustee Witt to move the item. Seeing no questions, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.9, faculty conversion to Canvas, the one-time stipends. It's a motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Milchiker. Any discussion of this item? Nope. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by a six to one trustee vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.10, classified personnel actions. Any changes?
No changes.
No changes to the item. Motion from trustee Wright and a second from trustee Jay. No questions. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.11, non-bargaining unit personnel action items. A motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Wright. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.12, district initial proposal to the CSCE and its chapter 586. A motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Jay. Seeing no further, any questions on it, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.13, planning services for state chancellor, office submittals, facilities planning and programming services. We have a motion from trustee Jay, a second from trustee Witt. I did have some questions on this, both in terms of the process and the amount. The questions were answered. You know, I understand the need. It is a pretty, it's a very significant contract, but I'm told by the administration it's needed and necessary and it's, we're going to get our money's worth for it. So I'm going to hope you're right on that. So let's go ahead, go ahead and vote. Motion carries by a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. All right. Moving on to reports. Staff response to public comments from previous board meeting. The 2019 Teacher of the Year recognition ceremony. And I just want to take a second to congratulate our honorees. Kenneth Lee, the horticulture instructor from Saddleback College, and Carrie Tucker-McCorkil, psychology instructor from IVC. That's really a tremendous honor. I'm really proud of you. Sorry, I can't personally attend this year. I think it's the only year I'm not going to be able to attend, but that's, that's excellent. Really good news. 7.3, Saddleback College and IVC speakers. 7.4, facilities plan status report. 7.5, oh, trustee Wright. Back to 7.4.
Just one question. How are we coming as far as learning if we're going to get the gate, gateway building and the IVC fine arts? Does it look good or does it get, or not?
So the board of governors at the chancellor's office just approved the projects to be moved forward to the Department of Finance.
Okay.
Last week. So it is in the submittal that the chancellor's office is sending to the Department of Finance as budget request.
So it looks good then?
Well, it's been approved by the board of governors. I think the big question is whether or not the new governor is going to fund all 39 projects or not.
Okay.
So, we'll know in January.
Thanks for that. 7.5, facilities plan status report. 7.6, OPEB retiree trust fund. And now moving on to reports from the administration and the governance groups. And we'll start off with Saddleback College Academic Senate, Blake Stevens.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and President Jamal and Chancellor Burke. We had an excellent 50th celebration in the quad today. I saw a lot of old friends and past students. That was wonderful. The academic senate at Saddleback College is a thoughtful and cordial group this year, focused on fine tuning our academic processes. It's a wonderful thing to watch. I want to talk about extraordinary students this year. We're six weeks into our 16 and two-thirds week semester already. I can't believe it. And as usual, I'm impressed by the quality of our students. Amazing students. Faculty are looking forward to the completion of contract negotiations that are in process. 50 years means that this college's facilities and campus are aging and in need of lots of deferred maintenance being brought up to date. So just want to point that out. We're interviewing next week for a new president for our college. We're looking forward to somebody who's both full of wisdom and thoughtful and also very progressive. Looking forward to that. Wanted to talk a little bit about curriculum review since that came up tonight. We look at our curriculum very carefully as faculty and department chairs. We look at the efficacy of what we do. We talk to our students. We talk to our past students and see how their education here propelled them into their careers, into life. And then we go back and look at how to fine tune our curriculum. So that is an ongoing process that's kind of, you know, under, under the radar but constantly happening. And also, I want to thank the Board of Trustees for everything you do to support our students. Thank you.
Hey Blake, thanks for that. Do you, do you think you have a strong poll? What's your sense of it?
To be determined, yeah. I'm impressed by some of the applicants.
All right.
How's that for a non-answer?
That was a deflection.
Yeah.
That's the way I read it.
Sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I guess we will see.
We'll see next week. Thank you.
All right. So we have Faculty Association President Kurt Meyer.
No Faculty Association report tonight.
All right. Thank you for that. And you're not June McLaughlin?
No, I'm not. My name is Daniel DeRiley. I'm substituting for June tonight. I'm the Academic Affairs Committee Chair, and I sit on the Senate. I'm the Academic Affairs Committee Chair and I sit on the Senate. We're also very happy to have a strong student class with us this fall. We have terrific waiting lists, they're moving their ways into classes and the students seem quite enthused. Particularly our student support centers on campus are doing very well in assisting students and our numbers are up quite a bit from last year. We've also enjoyed working with student equity on campus in our Flex Week and Laser Week, and we see a strong partnership moving through there. Our primary goal this fall in the Academic Senate is to work with the Institutional Effectiveness Committee and with our Office of Research in revising, piloting, and evaluating our academic program review. That really is the core of what we do. We want to make sure that our academic, traditional academic programs and CTE programs are performing up to their standards. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Vice Chancellor of Technology and Learning Services.
No report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources, Cindy Viscachill.
No report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chancellor of Business Services.
Just real quickly, I wanted to introduce Mr. Menhany Efrem, who is in the audience. He is our new Director of ATUP Site Development. Today's his first day.
Okay. Welcome aboard. All right, let's move on to IVC Classified Senate.
For this month, I just have to report that we are continuing with our Learning Lunch Professional Development Series, and we just have one on how to use those emergency chairs they have on the two-story building. So anybody who wanted to learn how to use one of those got to come to that. And we are doing one on, I believe, Google Forms next month.
Okay, thank you for that. Now we have Saddleback College Classified Senate.
Good evening. Couple of things here to report. First off, on Wednesday, August 15th, during Professional Development Week, our past president Craig Connor helped facilitate CPR and AED training. We put 22 staff members and two staff or classified management. We paid for their cards to be approved for the CPR and AED training. On Friday, the 21st of September, we held our Classified Staff Luncheon, which was a great success. We had it for the first time outside in the Quad and we had Lucille's come and cater it, which was great. Heard a lot of great comments from that. Had one person that had been here for almost 40 years saying that was the best luncheon that she's had in 40 years, so. That was great. And then to continue on with the 50th Birthday Party for Saddleback College, Classified Senate had a booth today, mostly run by Craig Connor, our past president, and myself. And we made cotton candy for all the staff and faculty and students that came by. Thank you.
Thanks for doing that. Trustee Witt, did you want to say something?
Yeah, Darren, I wanted to ask you, did someone from campus offer that CPR class and AED? Or did you get an outside source? I'm curious.
It was offered through the Health Center, yes.
Nice.
Yes.
I applaud those who took the time to do it.
Yeah, it was a two-hour training, we went through and then at the end of the training, once everything was processed, we get a little card.
American Heart?
Yep.
Right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, and to bring us home for the evening, Scott Green, CSEA President.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Kesteg Fire reminds us that the fire season is not over. During the time that I was attending CSA Conference, we had the Ferguson Fire, we had the Cranston Fire. There was a lot of areas that really were burning out of control. But during the CSA Conference, we actually were raising money to help all those that were in need. And in one hour during the conference, the delegates there were able to raise $41,000. And we ended up raising a total of $51,000 for the conference. So we were very happy that we were able to raise money to help those in need. The other thing is that as we are coming close to the midterm elections, CSA is really putting forth a drive and an effort to get young people involved. And one of the things that CSEA does is they want to make sure they get the message out that it doesn't matter what party anyone belongs to. What matters is that we support anyone who's willing to advocate education in this state. And that's the message that we want to get out to young people so that they understand that CSEA is for education and they will support anyone who advocates education. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and that wraps up the, the meeting for tonight. Have a good night, everyone.
Great.
Good meeting, thank you.
We're half an hour early.
Nice day, long day.
Oh, yeah, for you, sorry, yeah.